All right, we're gonna get the September 16th meeting of the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals in order. We are going to call our first application brought by Sally Cavali of 11 Cliff Avenue in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48 Section 6 and Section 808 10.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 11 Cliff Avenue in Situate, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent. Hello?
Hello. For the record, Terry McGovern from Stenbeck &amp; Taylor Engineers representing Sally Cavali, who is here with me, also Jamie Kellinger from Axiom Architects, who can answer any architectural questions. And essentially what we're in front of the board for is the raising and reconstruction of a 1940s dormer cape that is non-conforming with respect to area infronage because it's in Third Cliff neighborhood, small lots that were created on land court plans back in the early 1900s. So where we're in a different part of town where we had conforming area infronage, this would simply be a building permit issue. And effectively what we're doing is we're keeping the same footprint of the house. We are pushing it back very slightly. Right now, the house in the 30-foot front setback to corner boards, it's slightly less than 30 feet, probably was 30 feet when it was built, but to foundation, but corner boards, it's a little less. We're gonna push it back approximately two feet. And we're going to bring it in on each side. Right now, we're required to have an eight-foot sideline setback in the zone. We're 9.3 and 9.8 respectively, and we're gonna bring that into 10 feet, so we're gonna narrow the house very slightly, as well as with respect to the rear setback, 20 feet. We're at 38. We are going to extend back an additional five feet in the bump out area, actually kind of reversing the bump out area from the existing to the proposed, kind of flipping it if you will, but still well within a conforming setback. With respect to grading around the house, we're essentially maintaining the same grading. I think we're lowering the front grading very, very slightly. And in the rear, because we have a walkout, the back of this grade will be lowered slightly as well. But we're not, one of the reasons we're not showing the proposed grading, we've actually shown several spot elevations throughout the site, is to note that essentially we're not changing any runoff patterns on the site, any drainage patterns, anything that's going to impact the abutters on either side. Nor are we proposing to create any additional impervious surface in the backyard area other than that little bit of deck area and bump out that flips in the rear. That essentially is my part of the presentation. I'm gonna let Mr. Kellinger go over the architecture as well here. Again, it's pretty straightforward, and then you may question afterward. Mr. Kellinger has had a chance to do this part.
Certainly.
Simple 3D view, kind of proposing a standard typical Chicago style, simple. And square footage for the new house, proposed at 2510 for all levels, finished space. As for elevations, the height, we're within the requirement of the main roof, 32 feet each inch is too big, and the roof peak being at 39.6. And we have a open pergola entry proposed for the sort of front steps that don't have any kind of solid roof structure on it.
So that pergola is not located on our proposed plan. Is that correct? Or is that the deck on the proposed plan?
Yeah, it shows, it shows the, it shows the entry.
Yeah, we showed it as actually, but it's an open covered pergola.
So those are, so those are just slats overhead?
Yes.
I understand.
I got it.
Yeah, after we had shown it as a deck, they opted to just change it and put the covered, or basically put the open pergola.
It looks very nice. And Bob, that would not need to comply with setbacks, is that correct?
That's correct. As long as the rain can get through it.
Yes. I didn't mean to interrupt him, sorry. That just threw me for a second.
No.
All right. So, yeah, I tolerated it when his better beard came onto the board, but now you're here, and I, it doesn't feel right. Other than that, I don't have any questions. I'm also...
Are there just town utilities there?
Yes, we're going to reuse all the existing utility connections, sewer water, everything will be cut and capped at the time. No setback, it's sewer.
Bob, do you have anything for us?
No, it's very good to me.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah. Good job hiring. With that, do we have a motion? I'll get us started off. I would make a motion that the board find that the proposed raise and reconstruct shown on the site plan by Stenbeck &amp; Taylor dated August 1st, 2021 creates no new nonconformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, and that the board grant the requested special permit. All those in favor?
Seeks us eye.
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 We started skipping the names.
We skipping the names?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you both. Good luck. We're going to move to our second application brought by John McDowell of 28 Wampatuck Avenue in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48 Section 6 and Section 8 10.2 of the bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the construction of a front porch to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 28 Wampatuck Avenue.
Hello? Evening. Hi, John McDowell, 28 Wampatuck Ave. You know, I, from my point of view, I thought this was a pretty simple situation, but apparently because the house is sitting, is already nonconforming and sitting within approximately three feet of the sideline where the porch is gonna extend to that same place across the front of the house, that's why I guess I'm here tonight. And the porch is gonna be eight feet in depth from the house and across the span of the, of the front structure there, which I think is 32 feet if I remember right. The other issue, I guess, has to do with the front setback. The engineering information shows that, that the eight-foot would still be further back than the average of my neighbors on either side of me, basically, which I gather is the requirement.
Yes, to clarify, whereas the front yard setback would probably typically be, is it 30 here, Bob, or 20?
Yeah, it's 30 everywhere.
There's 30 here, but because of our average setback provision in between intersecting streets, the required setback here under the code is 17, which even though you're coming closer to the street, you'll still be beyond that 17-foot setback.
Right. I believe right now I'm only 25 feet off the front as it sits without the porch, so...
Which is, you're not, you're not nonconforming, and you are remaining in conformance with this...
Right. The only other thing, I guess, is I, you know, I've been talking to a contractor, trying to get some pricing on it, and in conversations with him, one of the things he said I should mention to you folks is that I'm planning to put a roof over the porch.
Yes.
So whatever that issue is, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it.
Sure, and just to explain that, if you weren't putting a roof over the porch, you would not need to be before us.
Ah.
The setbacks would not be a question. You'd still need a building permit, the building apartment and whatnot, but because it is a covered porch, it becomes subject to the setbacks we're speaking on.
Okay.
And typically, we'd consider a porch covered and a deck not covered.
Right. I see.
You know, we are, even though it feels like we're going further into a nonconforming front setback, we are not because of that intricacy in our code. Obviously, this home is very close to the eastern lot line. I personally am not that concerned that continuing out that front porch even that close, and this is significantly close, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We're gonna hear some from some more people on that. For me, so, it will have a roof. Talk to me about the walls of the porch. What are we looking at? No walls at all, open air?
There's no walls, it's just open all the way around.
For me, that sort of mitigates my concerns about how close to the property line it is, or at least some of them, but, Susan?
Yeah, I wouldn't have any concerns.
Does that tree line continue between you and the adjacent property as well that you see there relative to...
The trees, it's not really trees, they're bushes.
Bushes?
But, yeah, that, the bushes go essentially to the, they end at my, at the front of my house, and they go all the way to the back property line, but they don't go any further in the front of the house, basically. I think on these engineering diagram, they show, they show actually...
Show's a fence.
There's a fence, there's a fence that goes, it's a, it's a rail fence, I think it's a, that goes basically from the front of my house out to the, I don't know, eight feet from the street or whatever it goes to.
Sure.
And that's the other side. And there's a fence that goes all the way down the property line in the back. The bushes are near the side of the fence.
Gentlemen? I want to hear from the neighbors. Bob, anything for us?
No, not really. I think certainly doesn't create any new nonconformities, doesn't increase any existing nonconformities.
Yeah, and then your, your office will obviously take care of the materials and whatnot that happened because it's that close. I imagine it's a little more nuanced because it's a porch and not living space.
Right.
Yeah. All right, do we have any abutters or other folks that are here on this application that would like to be heard? Anybody else want to make a motion?
I'll try.
On the application of McDowell, 28 Wampatuck Avenue, for a, in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 8 10.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, to allow the construction of a front porch to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 28 Wampatuck Avenue, move that the board find that the plan as proposed on Morse, the Morse engineering plan dated 7/30/2021 shows new, no new nonconformities, and to the extent, there, no new nonconformities, and to the extent there are any existing nonconformities, there is no increase in the existing nonconformities. Sure, I think we want to say that any intensification is not substantially more detrimental. Detrimental to the, and any intensification is not substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood. Yeah.
Second?
All those in favor?
Eye.
Eye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, good luck with the porch.
Thank you.
Did we say who's writing?
No, we didn't.
I can do the first one.
You want to do the first one?
Sure.
Anybody want to try to take a stab at, did, did you guys get to try one from the last meeting?
No, they didn't. They can try the first one.
Yeah, you want to try one of these? You want us to send you a template?
Sure.
Give us a, yeah.
Well...
They're not, they're not as scary as they look, or as scary as my turnarounds of late have made them seem.
Just a process question.
Please.
I'm trying to understand from, I think I understand that I have, there's a 30-day period during which the abutters or anyone else object, and so I can't do anything for that length of time.
So, Bob, the appeal period's 20 days or 30 days?
It's 20 days after your decision's filed with the town clerk.
So, we receive up to 90 days to file the decision with the town clerk. We don't typically take that long, even though the statute allows us to. And then when the decision's filed with the town clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period in which one of your abutters could appeal our decision to us. That's unlikely, given that nobody showed up to object and given that this is a porch?
Yeah.
They could. It's even more unlikely that they would appeal, that they would either win their appeal or win a cease and desist to your construction. So you need to take all those things under advisement? I think, Bob, am I correct in saying that some folks choose to proceed with construction prior to the lapse of that appeal period?
During the appeal period, right.
Yeah.
We still have to wait for your decision to get filed.
You need our decision in order to get your building permit.
So will I be notified when your decision is filed?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I'll know that I can, that I can engage the contractor and start things going.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, appreciate it, just trying to understand. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And thanks for asking. So, sorry, you were trying the, that one, or you want to try the first one? It's gonna fit into the...
I'll try.
The example a little bit easier?
The first one?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, because we have a lot of raise and reconstructs, we don't have many porches, and then do you want to do the second one?
Sure.
All right.
I'll send Justin out.
Love it. Thank you. With that, we're gonna move on to our third application, continued from July 15th, 2021, brought by Andrew Spaff of Stockbridge Properties LLC and a 41 Kavanaugh Road in Situate, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48 Section 6 to allow the expansion and intensification of a pre-existing nonconforming structure at 106 through 108 Stockbridge Road in Situate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I need to recuse myself, I am an abuter.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, sir. We'll see you over there?
I'll rule.
Yeah. Welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, we're members, my name is Stephen Ryder, I represent the applicant of Stockbridge Properties LLC, and with me is the manager of Stockbridge Properties, Andrew Spaff. We have submitted since our last appearance before the board, some additional information, which I hope will assist the board in making a decision. One of the things that we submitted was a revised plan that includes the lot out back, which was not included in the plan that we had at the, at this... We also submitted, I think yesterday, and I hope you had an opportunity to look at it, a very nice letter from many of the neighbors who had not appeared before and had not spoken up. It's dated June 28, 2021, a letter to the zoning board, signed by a number of the neighbors, and is not only supportive of this application, but also a very complimentary of Mr. Spaff and the way that he runs his business, and I hope that the board will take that into One of the other things that we found when we were looking through, the property was owned from the 1930s, I think, by a family called Wheeler, and they're the ones that, you know, set the original nonconforming use. And we found it going, and they left a whole bunch of materials for, for the subsequent owners, and one of the things we found in those materials was an affidavit from, from, Mrs. Wheeler, I've forgotten her first name, which we submitted, that had some very interesting information about how the property was used in the past. Here we go, yeah. Affidavit of Ann Wheeler, who says from the 1930s through 1976, her husband had run the business in this location, and, and she had been his bookkeeper for the business. And it's an interesting bit of history. She lists a lot of the activities that had been on in the property, one of which I hadn't quite anticipated, which was chicken farming. I don't, I don't think we intend to start chicken farming, but it was an interesting... But the other things that are set out as during the period from the 1930s through 1976 are quite consistent with the use that the property's been put to since that time and since the adoption, and the grandfathered aspect. She also interestingly says, is this the one where she says they had 100 employees?
Yeah, next page.
The next page.
She struck some pieces of equipment.
Oh, yeah, she says that during their busiest periods, they had approximately 100 people and its employ to carry out the various jobs and business activities. So I thought this would be an interesting thing for you to see and to put in the record that this was an even better activity on the site compared to the past, prior to the adoption of the property, and certainly has been censored as an animal. Now, in terms of, the one comment I wanted to make, and then I certainly want to answer any questions anybody has, is I do, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you, you had pretty much adhered to this and cautioned the public commentators on this, but what we're here is we're talking about a 2,400-square-foot quonset hut that was built on the property. And the determination that the board has to make is while that could certainly be considered an extension under 48 Section 6, the ultimate determination is whether that quonset hut is substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use on the property. Mr. Spaff testified last time, and I think it's, it's unrebutted, that the use of that quonset hut is to take trucks that otherwise would be repaired outdoors and serviced outdoors and brought indoors so that the people who are servicing them and repairing them can do them during, during bad weather and also in the winter can be a little more comfortable. There isn't any evidence, which I'm aware, that the existence of this quonset hut has increased the truck traffic for these parts of land. And there's no evidence that the existence of this quonset hut has created more dust or noise, which is something the neighbors, some of the neighbors like to complain about. In fact, the only real impacts that you see that, that this building has is in connection with putting up the building, Mr. Spaff put up a light to light up the area more, and as you'll see in the letter from the, from the neighbors, that's something they like, that's something that they wanted there because they were concerned about, about people gathering after hours in the dark to hang out there and do what's due. Now, that light, we had talked at, I think at the, at one of the last meetings, we had talked about redirecting that, so it's a little, a little more down and less, you know, less seen by some of the neighbors. I mean, the other, the only other impact that I would at least argue that this quonset hut has is a visual one. I mean, there's now a quonset hut there, and it doesn't look, I mean, when you go over there and you look around, it doesn't look a whole lot different than the other buildings that are there. In fact, it looks better if, if one is considering the impact, it's a more modern building, it's sleeker, it looks better than the other buildings. Now, I just wanted to, to address, so far, we've had two neighbors and their family and relatives, both, both of whom happen to be town employees, who have expressed significant opposition. I think what is clear from their statements and their writing is that they're not, their opposition is really to the operation. Their opposition is to the fact that there's a nonconforming use in their neighborhood. And unfortunately for them, a nonconforming use is a permitted use in that neighborhood. Their intent is not, I would suggest, it reveals that it's not to ameliorate or, or try to help with, you know, the impact, whatever it is of this quonset hut, they really want this operation shut down. I mean, you could hear that from the complaints last time. There's also in the record, there's a history of the neighbors making these phony environmental complaints that caused the environmental people in the town to call out the DEP. Those were all thoroughly investigated earlier, earlier, and found to be, have no substance to them. And lastly, you'll find in, in the new materials that have been submitted, is that when we came away from our last meetings and we were thinking about, well, where should this, this berm that we've been talking about be? Where should it really be to provide your neighbors with the maximum protection from having to look at a quonset hut and the maximum kind of more general shielding from what's the activity that's going on there? And what became absolutely clear as we were looking through this, this is the absolute best place for this, was in the back area... best place for this, was in the back area of the lot that's owned by this condominium. We drew up a plan of a berm where that berm would go. It would be a tremendous advantage for the condominium itself. It would also have residual, not residual, but additional benefits to the neighbor in the property next to the condominium because it would provide shielding there. And we sent it to the other occupant of one of the, there are two units in this condominium, and one of them is owned by Stockbridge, and we sent it to the other person, Ms. Mullin. And she absolutely refused to consider it or discuss it, which I would again suggest reveals an interest not in ameliorating or protecting or mitigating the impacts, but is more, I just want these guys to shut out.
Well, let's just pause on that for a second. It looks like it's part on her property.
The, the design, the squiggly one that we...
Squiggly.
Yeah, okay.
Not sure I follow.
So she, she, she sent a letter to the board, which had attached to it a plan that I had emailed to her, which is the one I, that we devised, which, which took the berm from the property line and moved it into the backyard. So I could tell by your expression.
I don't think I have that.
I don't think, I don't know that I have that.
I have, I have your plan.
I emailed it to you.
I apologize. So it's been a...
I don't know.
I have your plan, and I look at a berm that looks like it straddles the property line.
Yes.
And it looks like it's on both properties.
Yes.
So just to say again, sounds like the berm's part on her property. And...
Well, let me, let me be clear.
Please.
Because this is important. It's not her property.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. Ma'am, I, ma'am, I want to tell you something upfront now. I think you have some valid points, okay? I want to hear those valid points. I understand you are emotional about this. I want to help you have those emotions, not cloud the valid points that you have. So if you need a minute when it comes time for you to speak, we're going to give you that minute. But, but please try with me, okay? Now, I'm, I'm sorry, hang on. I, I do this for a living, this who owns what sort of thing.
Yeah.
So I'm confident you're going to be able to walk me through this. That's a condo, it's two units, she owns one of the units.
Right.
Unless this part of the property is an exclusive use area owned only by the unit that he owns, that's part her property. It's not all her property, but it's part her property.
Well, to be...
Please.
With all due respect, it's a common area of the condo.
Mm-hmm.
It is therefore owned, managed, controlled by the...
Condominium Trust.
The condominium trust.
Of which she's probably one of the two trustees. I have not read the documents.
Not actually, but...
So the condominium trust is solely controlled by one unit owner?
It only has one trustee at the moment.
Who serves at the pleasure of the two unit owners?
I, I would not characterize it as the pleasure of the two.
Okay. Is the trustee of the condominium empowered to grant easements over the common area without the consent of both unit owners? That would be incredibly rare in a two-unit condominium trust document.
That's probably not true.
So they're, they're probably not empowered to grant that easement without consent of both unit owners, is what you're saying?
Probably not.
She's one of the unit owners.
Right.
So I'm guilty of committing an overgeneralization when I said that was part her property, but when you dig down to it, I was right. If she's not okay with it, it's her property, it's not for us to say whether or not she should be.
Well, it's, if the issue is what we had proposed of her...
Yes.
An optimum solution, which I have the plan here if anybody wants to see it.
Sure.
And my letter, her one.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, and my letter is, is there, and her kind of snippy email back to me is there.
Can you do me a favor? Can we dispense with the adjectives?
Okay.
Thank you.
Her email back to me is also included at the first page. The, so what, what we had proposed and what we had suggested would be an ideal solution for both the condominium and for the neighbor one, one lot beyond would be to locate the berm there. It would provide maximum screening and maximum...
Sure. I'm having a hard time envisioning where this squiggly berm fits on your plan.
Right.
Oh, can I?
Absolutely, please. Because I think it's important.
Can I help? What building? Is that the condo?
Yeah, because I don't think that building's on this plan.
I think that is the condo.
This is the lot we're talking about when we say the condo, or this is the lot? This is the lot, right? That's, I was straight on that.
Yeah.
So you were talking about, and this property line here is this property line?
Uh, this, yes. So this, this property line is this.
So you were looking at taking a berm and putting it...
We connect the fence, there's a fence here.
Here.
And we're here to there. Correct. Which, if I can show you this...
And here. Yeah, so that looks like it would be a lot on, yeah, on the property.
Okay, let me show you this.
Please.
So this is a photo from 2015, prior to me owning the property.
Sure.
And, and of course, it's cleaned up substantially since. The...
The condo is...
The condo is here.
Is not on this picture.
Not on this plan. This is all area that has been occupied by this parcel, the parcel that I own, for as long as, for, forever, really, since Albert Wheeler.
That's all that.
So we have proposed to put this berm, this is the tree line that exists. We, that berm, that squiggly line follows this existing tree line and cleans up all this, the mess and whatnot.
So, listen, that location for the berm, especially with that picture, makes perfect sense to me. Here's the thing, I don't get to say what makes perfect sense or not on her property. And I understand that property's half yours, it's half hers.
Right.
And in terms of the common area, it's all each of yours, that's the deal with condos. So I, I'm going to give you a chance to explain to me why I should hold that against her, but I don't see it yet.
Well, I, let me first say that.
Sure.
We, although I don't entirely agree with your explanation of the law and how it works...
Okay, we can get into that.
As a practical matter.
Yeah.
And, and, and I would say it's not really the board's concern at this point. I mean, if they were to approve something and we couldn't make it happen, that would be a different issue, but it's not really the...
Right, but if we grant something based on a berm that you might not have the rights to build, we can't totally ignore that as our concern.
Yeah, yes. The, what I'm suggesting about what I'm going to call the squiggly berm.
Yes, correct.
Is, is that we are not proposing that to the zoning board of appeals.
Seems like we spent a lot of time on that, if that's the case.
Well, what I want, what I wanted to, we are not proposing that...
Okay, great.
Because the neighbor was so adamantly opposed to even discussing it. What I did want, what I did want to...
Last five minutes is my fault, Ben. Sorry.
What I did want to, the point I was, I really wanted to make about that is this was a perfect solution, which to the problem that this quonset hut created and the, and what is really the absolute and abject refusal to even consider it and hostility directed at it indicates that what I said is that we do, this is not, these are not neighbors who are looking to cooperate and mitigate and do all that. They're looking to shut this thing.
I, I understand your point about folks not being upset about the relief you need, folks being upset about the fact that the facility exists at all. That point's well taken.
So the proposal is the one that was on the original plan and the revised plan, which is a berm across the property line. That for a variety of reasons, we are more optimistic that we can get that accomplished with some portion of it on the condo's common area than getting into the long and expensive fight for the squiggly. The thing on the...
Yeah. Why does it have to be partially on the condo property? Why can't it be all on your property?
Well, I'll let you answer that.
There's a portion of the back property line that has had this use, Wheeler's use, for forever. The, the property line was put in the location that it was by a previous owner of the property to subdivide that lot off to make it a duplex. So you have a property line that's into the construction yard, however, has never been associated with that property. I've, I've got photos from the past 20-something years.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I want to make sure I'm understanding you. The property lines are on Mr. Spath's engineering plan. The formerly Carol Anne Joseph lot is all condominium land, correct?
The, the parcel that we were just looking at.
Yep, yep, that parcel's labeled now...
Correct. That was broken out of Wheeler's, Wheeler owned this whole thing, right?
Sure, but it's history aside, today it's all part of the condo.
Correct.
So what I'm asking is, why can't the berm go entirely on the land that isn't part of the condo? Entirely on the land that you own entirely?
Because part of the, part of the, our operation is on this back corner, has been on this back corner, prior to...
So the reason, yep, I, I follow you. The reason is, you're saying the reason is because part of the condo land is being used by our yard. Another way to say that is because our yard encroaches on the condo land.
And if I can...
Please.
And has for more than 20 years.
Sure, but you know you don't just get adverse possession, you have to go get adverse possession.
Well, I've done a number of adverse possession cases.
Sure.
And, yes, you do need, you sometimes, if you're, if the adverse property owner disputes...
Sure.
You do need to go to the land court and get a declarative judgment.
I, I don't want to speak for her, I'm certainly not her counsel. I feel like the adverse property owner disputes.
Well, again, you know, we're, we're hitting that same, she's not the adverse property owner.
No, but she's 50%. Here's a, here's a different question for you. In all your time in litigating and being involved in adverse possession matters, have you ever seen a board of appeals rely on an adverse possession claim before that claim had been made in the courts?
No.
And adjudicated? Yeah, that's another way to say it. Or before that claim had been consented to by all of the property owners involved?
No.
So that's where we are right now.
However, in this case, I'm half of the property owner of the...
You are half of the property owner.
Of the parcel investigation that has...
That is being encroached upon.
Is being encroached upon.
You are not all of the property.
I, I understand. However, I would, I would argue that that strengthens our position if we were to get into that situation.
Yep.
However, I'm trying to avoid that by saying...
I hear you, it does. I'm not here to litigate that matter. I'm not here to stop you.
Well, I just want to, I just need to continue with the...
Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm up here. I get to go first, I'm sorry. I'm also not here to say you can encroach on your abutters. There's a curve ball. Was Mr. Wheeler encroaching on these abutters prior to the zoning code?
Wheeler owned that parcel.
Wheeler owned this parcel?
Yes.
And then they divided it up.
And Wheeler owned the parcel behind?
He owned everything, yes. Terry Nielsen...
That answered my question. So to that end, I, we got to hear from everybody else. Obviously, I'm monopolizing. This one's kind of in my wheelhouse, but if Wheeler didn't own those parcels, we would have an extension of your use into land that was, probably wasn't protected, and that would make this a different conversation? Wheeler did, I'm sort of thinking that that doesn't make this a different conversation. We have what arguably looks like it might be an encroachment into abutting land. Obviously, that's complicated because of the condo. That's not our problem, that's the abutters problem. But we're looking at, you're asking us to rely on a berm to mitigate some issues that we have here. I am not willing to rely on a berm that extends onto a abutters property. I'd even rely on it before you showed me the easement, if the owners involved were here in front of me or presented something saying, yeah, we're cool with it, we're going to give them an easement. We're not in that situation.
Right.
You think we should be, that's fair, but we're not.
Could I point something out from the letter to the zoning board, board from, from the neighbor?
Yeah, absolutely.
When, a number of years ago, I want to say, I want to say four or so ago, I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Mullin, which he had the property line staked.
We got those, we got those adjectives again now, right? But please, let's, please just, please just leave it out. You're going to make some valid points. She's going to make some valid points. If we leave out the adjectives and some of the emotion, the points will be better. Thank you.
Okay. If you'll notice, on the, the fourth point, that at that particular time, when the neighbors were complaining and trying to shut the yard down, as I was cleaning it up, I offered to, to fence in the entire, entire property on that side.
Yes.
And they, they wouldn't allow it, following the property line, because I, at that time, was not an owner. And I had no idea that this, this yard encroached on their property. I didn't know what the line was.
I follow.
Okay, so, so I have made multiple attempts to try to keep the neighbors happy, to differentiate the side, you know, to...
I don't mean to imply that you didn't. It seems like that to me as well.
So I guess the bottom line becomes if, if we're having a problem with the, the look and the location of this quonset hut, to work on equipment inside, what exactly else can I do? I've offered berms, I've offered fences, we're much quieter, we, I have given you, I've submitted a traffic count from the early 90s that was done that showed hundreds of trucks coming and going today.
I, I follow you. I do.
What else, what else, what else can I do?
Okay, that's a, that's a question that should be answered.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
That might, might solve this problem for the board is...
Sounds like a worthwhile, yeah.
If you were, if the board were inclined to say that this berm was satisfactory, and it's only a question of whether it's 10 feet this way or 10 feet that way.
Yes.
I mean, you, you could say that it's, that it's to be constructed on the applicant's property unless he gets legal rights to, to put it on the other berm.
Yes.
And that would put it, you know, and then, and then we could, then, then you wouldn't have to decide. And then that would leave the applicant with a decision of, do I want to do that fight or do I just want to build it on my property?
Sure. Bob, on that line, do they need a building permit for the berm?
No.
Okay.
No, it's possible you'd need something from the conservation commission. I see it cuts across the 100-foot buffer and 50-foot buffer zones, so earthwork of any type in those zones requires permission from the conservation commission.
Sure.
Can I point out that I do have an order of conditions to work outside the 30-foot buffer? There's a 30-foot buffer on that property?
Yeah.
I have an order of conditions that allows me to work.
Sure. I'm not sure, I honestly don't know if that would apply to the berm as well. Probably not, but I'm not the person to help answer those questions.
I couldn't say that either.
Yeah.
Depend on the wording and terms of the, of the orders.
Sure.
But certainly, you know, there's a, there's even a chance that you'd be granted another or extension of that in order to do something like this.
So I think we've heard the crux of what you'd like to do. So let's, let's get into the letter for a minute, because this letter's no joke. We've got quite a few signatures here, and it's not wishy-washy. These abutters, it's probably easier to talk about who's not on the, we're okay with this list, right?
Can I point out another small fact? That there are two major opponents to this quonset hut, one being the... hut, one being the, one of which isn't even an abutter?
Sure.
The only person that's actually in a butter is my co-owner in the condo trust.
Right, so that's over here now formerly Carol Anne Joseph.
Correct.
And then, so, I see 116, 130, 140, and 160 are probably a little further away, I meant to plot these out, they're further up the road to the west.
140 is, correct. 140 is, yes, correct.
And this is, these are almost all even numbers, which are going to be on your side of the streets, is that hold true here?
Those are all the abutters on that side of the street.
So, we got 116, and then 119 is going to be further to, further towards countryway, I guess I should say.
119 is directly across.
Thank you. 119 is directly across. Are the parks on this list? They are. The parks are good. 116 is good. The co-owner of Carol Anne Joseph land is not good. And where are you folks? Did you sign this letter?
No.
You did not? I sort of knew that, but I wanted to confirm. Where are you folks located on my plane?
I'm at 134, and when they jumped on 132, I became a buck and a butter to the situation.
Sure. And then, 134, I mentioned this last time, people think that Susan and I are playing games on our phone sometimes, but we're looking at properties on satellite. 134 is a little bit further down, it's either the Dillon land or one over, it's probably the former Dillon land, yeah. Or you are Dillon, I apologize. There you go. And you're with him, correct?
Yes.
There we go. All right. So, if I may, well, we're going to get to you guys in a little bit more of the letter, if you have it. George, what did we miss?
So, the proposed berm does not go back, as proposed, does not go back to the former Carol Anne Joseph Pam Ambrose property line all the way back, is that correct? To the back part of the property line? It goes, it goes what, a hundred and sixty feet long?
No, that's actually the, if you look at the cutaway, it's actually not, the hundred and sixty is the length of that lot line, so it's more along than the...
So, it doesn't go... I finally figured it out. They can't build a berm around the yard that benefits you the way that we all, I think, wanted to, without significantly traversing, I won't say encroaching, that's a judgment word, the land of the condominium.
Yes.
That's the conundrum.
Right.
Well, they need to, the most important part of the berm for your land would be on the land of the condominium.
No, it would just be right along the lot line.
Running along your lot line.
No.
No, their lot line.
The extent of the lot line, which essentially is still, I don't have the...
So, this is...
What he means in the location that it's on.
So, what I'm asking is, why doesn't it run, and my understanding is the reason it doesn't run the full length of the lot line...
Because this is the yard.
Because there's, right, this area.
Right. So, either they cut off part of the yard that they're using...
Right.
Or they cut the berm into the land of the condominium, it's one or the other. You would, well, you would prefer to cut the berm into the land of the condominium, which is why your squiggly line makes sense. We are concerned about relying on that, given that you don't have one hundred percent support from the condominium owners.
Yes, I would not rely on the squiggly line.
No, understood, understood.
We don't want to fight that battle.
So, I understand. What's in that, I don't want to call it disputed area, that back area where there's activities? What are you guys doing back? I just don't know, I'm just asking, what are you guys doing back there?
Currently, there's some material storage.
Some material storage, okay. But there's no sort of active machinery or anything, you're using it basically as a storage?
Well, you load and unload the trucks.
Okay.
There's not, in that back area, there's, currently, there isn't a lot of activity, to be honest with you. There's some storage of material for the project at the train station that's happening right now. They've rented a portion to leave some material there.
Okay. So, from a business standpoint, it's sort of pre-committed, right?
Correct.
Is what you're telling me, that there's, it's not just empty, it's not, it's in use, and it's in use that otherwise contractually committed. Okay. That's why I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, it took me a minute.
Did you just say you're renting out the land that's possibly not your land?
I'm renting out this parcel right in the back.
Oh, no, that is his land.
That is my land.
Okay, not the corner that's kind of disputed?
Correct.
Okay.
But he has to get back there.
But that's to, otherwise, you can't get back there to the land.
Right.
You have to go through, you have to drive through land that wouldn't be theirs.
Potentially.
Potentially, you drive or walk through that land to get to the place that you're renting out?
She's asking. This, no, not necessarily, you could go around, but that...
Sounds like they might be blocking on that part sometimes.
Well, it's kind of hard to describe, I guess, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean...
Like I say, I'm happy to show you again the pictures from 2015, it's all kind of an open space, the material storage is in the back.
Right, right. And again, where we're coming at is...
You're using a chunk of the condominium land as the yard.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's disputing.
No.
Correct.
Yep.
And profiting...
I was curious if they were...
Since they're renting it out to the contractor.
No, we're renting my land.
It's a for-profit business, it's also a private property dispute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was more of a feasibility question.
I think whether or not they should be allowed to is in dispute, whether or not they are is not in dispute.
It's not in dispute.
Yeah, it takes a minute to, glad to sink in, I understand.
So, that was, yeah, that's my, my question really goes to the feasibility of taking that, a berm, and running it all the way back to the back of that property line, right? That's my question.
And that is not something you are offering, right?
Correct. If I may, the location of the berm that I've proposed, the Dillon house is near the front of the lot line, so that would block a majority of the view of the yard, including all of the Quonset hut and the light that seems to...
Because your point is, there's a great deal of activity back here...
Correct.
Right? That is part of the issue, if you will, because you're using, which is properly your land, not in dispute, not a question.
Counsel's point is, that's activity that was always there.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And the Quonset hut, which counsel's point is at issue here, would be blocked by this berm.
Right, yes, exactly. We good, or we want to go to abutters?
I just have one...
You're going to get more bites of the apple too.
I do, I just have one question, just based on my notes from last time, there was a lighting issue that went right into somebody's house, has that been mitigated?
I actually took a picture of the light, maybe printed out, I took it today. It's pointed down.
Okay.
Since the installation, it's pointed down, and I'm happy to show you.
Yeah, and we have other people that are saying that.
Lighting has been added, but we're going to hear from the abutters on that.
Do you want to see the picture of the, of the light?
Sure!
Sure. That was the one remaining thing that wasn't mentioned.
So, this light, so this light is facing towards Starbridge, towards the Parks' house? This is the one that faces, it's pointing down towards the back lawn.
Where's that light?
Right here.
It's just, it's on the corner?
It's right on the corner.
How tall is it?
I just took a picture of the top, it's probably twenty feet or so.
Twenty feet, okay. How tall is the top of the Quonset hut?
It's eighteen foot tall.
It is?
Yeah.
Can I see that picture again?
The Quonset hut's like...
Not in the frame, right?
Right. I took a picture of the light.
That's a lot of pull for have the Quonset hut not in the frame.
But the Quonset hut's rounded here, at the peak, it's eighteen feet, that's...
Yeah, but this is on the corner of the hut, or no? I'm sorry, I took your phone.
We're actually, it's right, trying to picture how it goes.
It's a little off, it's not in the corner.
This is on a post, that is, this is on a freestanding post.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Close to the corner, not on...
I got you.
It's not on the corner.
That's, okay.
In the proximity of the corner.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good light. If I put that up, it would have fallen down already. All right.
I mean, that was the one thing I hadn't...
Yes.
Listen, yeah.
Bob, you want to go before the abutters, not that you can't also go after?
I'm not sure I want to go at all.
Okay. With that, we're going to start with anyone who would like to make a public comment here. I'll reiterate what I said last time. We do not have the power to stop this site from operating, or to stop it from operating in the type of business that it is operating in. It is pre-existing non-conforming, that is a more official term of the term grandfather, which I know many of you have heard. This site has operated as a commercial processing construction, there's a thousand words for it, for almost a hundred years. State law doesn't allow us to say that they have to stop. State law does allow us to say that they can't continue to expand it. Central issue here is whether or not the addition of this hut, which was obviously very easy to notice and was not a gray area, is an expansion of that use. I'm open to us talking about whether some other things are expansion of that use, to an extent. On that front, and about the berm, we would like to hear from you folks. Who would like to go first? Sure, yes.
So, this is a different issue.
Sorry, just your name and address for the record.
Sarbides, 23 Gattashter Lane, Situate. I'm on the Water Resource Commission.
Yes.
And the back end of this property is inside the hundred-and-fifty-foot tributary buffer zone, and there's some additional land that's in the Water Resource Protection Area as well. And so, our concern would be, if there's a berm constructed, does that increase runoff? Is any of that inside those protected areas?
Sure. And so, that was sort of part of my question to Bob before. We are typically not the board for those questions, which doesn't mean they are not very valid questions. And so, Bob, is there a checks and balances in place when they present the plan for this berm that will answer those questions?
My inclination is that it needs to go before the Conservation Commission, which would include considerations such as those, certainly, whether it's for a modification of an existing order of conditions, or something exclusively targeted on the construction of this berm.
And is that the case even though they are outside of the hundred-and-fifty, or, excuse me, the hundred-foot buffer?
Good question, I guess I don't know that.
Because the berm that's on this plan, not the squiggly berm, which is no more...
It's outside the buffer.
Is outside the buffer. So, I think what I'm hearing is maybe they're allowed to build the berm.
There's got to be, I don't, I'm, there's got to be some checks and balances, certainly.
Okay.
If we're building a building, then absolutely, if you were in the Water Resource Protection District, and all of that, it would kick you into a different permitting process, you wouldn't be allowed to go forward without mitigation.
Sure.
That sort of thing.
Regardless, right.
Whereas just moving earth, frankly, the building department doesn't deal with moving dirt around.
Right. So, those, is it, who should he be talking to? Concom?
I would say Concom.
Yeah. Those seem like valid questions to me, they're just...
The other issue there is that it's a zoning issue in the sense that there are certain uses that are allowed, and activities that are allowed in those districts, and certain uses that aren't.
Those zones, I'm sorry, those buffer zones.
Yeah, well, not conservation buffer zones, but Water Resource Protection District zone A, that sort of thing.
Right. I think the use ship has sailed, right, under the, under the pre-existing non-conforming nature that we talked about.
I would guess that, but I'd want to review, you know, the wording exactly and see if this type of new construction, it's not construction, but this type of new activity would trump that in some way.
I would agree with you in that whether or not this Quonset hut consists and results in new activity makes those questions for our board. If the answer is yes, it does. I follow you there. We good? All right. Who would like to go next? Yes, and just, again, just your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm ready for Iris and Bob. I'm Dave. So, I have two questions, if you don't mind, I'm going to have like a request, say.
Okay.
The first question is, last time, we talked about the back left-hand corner lot, you look at it, there's the square and then the straight?
Yep.
Does it sound like an impression that he expressed that he owns, the square is actually part of his lot now?
Well, he, it's a, it appears to be a separate lot, but they are stating that they own it, is that...
Well, the reason I'm asking is, part of what the discussion was of the activity of whether it goes back, and whether that would benefit us, if it would essentially jog as part of it, and discussion of going straight back, which was last time, is concern that it would disrupt the operations on the site, that if he actually then owns that lot to the side outright, then wouldn't jogging it around that property line essentially result from the same idea? And I guess they thought...
You're saying he should run it the whole property line?
That would be, that's part of the request I have, and then part of the question is, that, seeing if that is, could it be validated, I guess, before I requested?
What do you, and you mean validated, that what be validated?
So, I'm asking if he actually owns it, and if he does own it, then in an extent why it can't be validated?
Sure.
Seeing that I can't understand that.
I can answer the why.
Does he mean this?
Yeah.
Or does he mean this?
I think the why is, is because they'd be putting up a berm in the middle of a big chunk of their yard.
Okay.
They're using property beyond the property line for the yard, and that's why they don't want to put the berm up on the property line.
So, there's two...
Right or wrong, the berm would be very inconvenient to them. Now, let's play this out. When I give them the floor back, they're going to say, the berm that we have proposed blocks everyone's view of the Quonset hut. Do you disagree?
I'm just seeing this...
I know you can't be positive, but it, does it look like it might?
Possibility.
Yeah. So, that, for me, does play back into their contention that the objections that we're hearing, property line disputes aside, are not to the Quonset hut and any expansion that results from that Quonset hut, but the objections are the fact, to the fact that this yard exists at all.
No, I wouldn't say that, as much as it being a non-conforming use, that it could be a cool, non-conforming structure, that you didn't have the rights to do something that would be a better benefit to the area, which in the first meeting, you could express a feel of town desire to take non-conforming sites and then make them be less detrimental for people, so thinking about how...
Sure.
...you guys' desires.
So, right, so just to back up, the structure isn't necessarily non-conforming... So, right, so just to back up, I don't, the structure isn't necessarily non-conforming, it's not violating any setbacks, it's not of a, of a non-conforming height or, or size, the, the use is non-conforming, the structure's gonna be used as part of that use. The question that was put before us is, does this structure make the use less non-conforming? And I think there's an argument that it does. They gotta fix some trucks. If I lived next door, I'd rather them fix the trucks inside, I'd rather them store the trucks inside. So, I can see that point, I don't know about the, whatever, how tall it is, light pole, that looks a little interesting to me if I live next door, but, so there, there's that, there's the argument that the hut on its own actually mitigates some of the issue here. And then, they're going to say, well, we're proposing a berm that is better than no berm, and I'm, I, I'm trying to shorten the conversation, I, I'm not trying to necessarily disagree with you either, but that's what they're saying, um... And I think that they have a point in some of those things. The hut being added, if, if any of you are telling us that the hut being added results in intensification of this yard, or even generally that there's been a clear intensification of the use of this yard, before, after, directly in connection with the hut, we need to talk about that. But if we just don't like the hut because it's part of the yard that we don't like, it's my opinion that our hands are a lot more tied.
So, I guess, two questions back, so one is the berm still, last meeting we talked about Sarbides, and it sounded like they were accepting of the idea, is this berm still considering Sarbides, I guess the first question?
Yeah, it's a very valid question.
And then, uh, the second question is, is it uncommon as part of a seeking of a zoning board that you guys would then take a moment not to change the use and make whether this use is allowed, but instead use that moment to say something to, again, assist in committing costs? That's not fundamentally changing what happens on the site, but continuing to assist in the mitigation? Is that an uncommon activity?
No, I don't think so, but let's, let's finish this conversation. This letter, essentially, which is signed by a, several abutters, essentially says that the folks who are against this are blowing it out of proportion.
I can see the letter, but I...
Oh, you know what? I wanna, you guys have, you guys think it's a bad idea to read this letter real quick?
No.
No, you should, you might... I, I'm a resident of one-thirty Stockbridge Road, I have lived there for more than twelve years. As of late, I have become a tenant at this address, my landlord is now Andrew Spath, so, you know, there's some motivation there, sure. Andrew offered to make the property line more pleasant, safe for my children, offered to place a fence, I'm starting to paraphrase. My joint condox neighbor wanted no part of this, she was skeptical and thought the offer was a ploy. My point is that from the start, Mr. Spath has made and followed through and able with every attempt to be a good and fair neighbor to me, and others he directly abuts. He has made himself available to answer questions, he has, whenever possible, corrected or addressed any issues or concerns. Hours have been altered, noise levels have been lessened, lighting has been added to reduce the light livelihood for late-night gatherings in the work yard off-hours. The work staff has cleaned up their act generally and their language. All in all, there is simply nothing to complain about. Andrew runs, runs his work yard with the neighbors in mind and the best interest of his staff, most of us are grateful for the changes. Thanks so much for your time, um, there's an, I skipped a line in here about the neighbors specifically, right? That anyone who's complaining, that I read earlier, but it's signed by one-thirty Stockbridge, one-twenty-two, one-sixteen, one-nineteen, one-twenty-nine, one-forty, one-sixty, and ninety. Mr. Spath, Mr. Spath, of these people other than the person at one-thirty Stockbridge, are any of the other folks tenants of yours? Do you own any of the other, only the one-thirty Stockbridge?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Terry Nielsen actually signed it as well, she, she is the original owner and is, is a tenant of mine as well.
On one-sixty Stockbridge?
Uh, she's ninety-three, she wrote it backwards, it's one-oh-six.
Got it.
I didn't realize it till...
Thank you, no, that's, that is...
So I apologize for that.
But thank you for clarifying that, okay. So, even putting aside his two tenants, we've got several abutters here that are saying the exact opposite of what you're saying. Now, okay, they're saying the exact opposite of you, your properties are more affected by this yard than them. Still, feel like you're seeing what I'm saying. What are they way off about?
They don't live there, they don't live right next door, they don't pay the price. Sarbides was installed yesterday, all day today, definitely stuff from, um, strike house.
So, here, I, I follow you. My problem with using that to stop this is, this property's been involved in that sort of work for a very long time.
No, they, they never did, they chose like that.
So, that's the distinction I wanna hear more about.
Yeah, that's what...
That's the distinction I wanna hear more about, please.
Uh, Chris Garcia, one-nineteen Stockbridge, uh, I'm third generation in my house, my, uh, my grandfather was one of Mr. Wheeler. I had two boys. And to Bob's, Mr. Wheeler did everything, he was, uh, like Ann's wife, uh, construction, you know, materials and whatnot. There were fewer houses in the neighborhood at that time.
Sure.
As more houses came in, Wheeler's business actually went down to, he only did gas line excavation, so it was more just storing materials and, so as I was a child, you know, in this house, it was trucks going in and out, that was all, you know? And out in the morning, you would see a fleet go, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning, at four o'clock in the afternoon, they all came back. And that was the extension of traffic, if you can get it. After Wheeler was gone, Nielsen supplied, it was a landscape, uh, supply company, so then Paul Nielsen owned it. He had a mowch grinder, he had, you know, trees brushed, and he also had other people renting other days, and other trucks would go in there, you know, on a daily basis.
Sure.
I think a lot of what people are seeing as the trucks going in and out has been the construction of Stockbridge Woods next to and through his property.
Yeah, that's a point, we made it there earlier in the meeting, absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean, the number of trucks just that roll past my house every day is ridiculous. But it's, it's a job thing, you know?
Yep.
So that's what's happening. So, has he intensified? Yes, he's intensified, I think, over what Wheeler used to do compared to what Nielsen used to, probably not. You know, he's a little cleaner than Nielsen, I mean, my house got hit by, you know, a chunk of metal on Nielsen's grinder, I mean, we love. But, he's not, the letter is not, she didn't have that letter when I signed that, I would've signed it if I'd seen some of those key points on it.
I'm sorry.
When she came to my door, we tried, no more.
Who's, who's she?
Uh, Bill Ropel, Marissa.
Okay. What did you sign?
Yeah.
I have, I have, I have...
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, you didn't sign this?
No, I signed one, I signed the back page.
Are you, I almost cursed. Are you... I'm gonna come back to you.
Yeah.
What, what's going on? He's telling me that these signatures weren't to this document. I got a staple here, what's going on? Talk to me.
What do you mean? Marissa gave me this sheet with these signatures on it, I spoke with the bottom four who added their signatures to it.
I, we, I'm sorry.
Did he say a piece of paper, or did he say two pieces of paper?
I'm sorry. Marissa, your, your... Just, just a second. Marissa, your tenant presented you with this stapled piece of paper, which then Janine made copies of, is that, is that right?
Several copies were delivered to the office yesterday.
Several copies were delivered, you guys delivered them, but you were presented with this document less the bottom four signatures.
Correct.
One, two, three, four, okay. And then, he is alleging that, actually, I'm gonna come back to you, you signed this, you signed a fully blank piece of paper.
So when Marissa came to my house...
Yep.
I'm going to write a letter to the zoning board...
Yep.
That says that he's not doing, you know, that he's not being a bad neighbor, and we discussed for a long time.
Okay.
It was at the first meeting.
Yep.
And we discussed for a long time, what was going on, their relationship now, why she had flipped, she used to, she and I fought him when we first moved in.
Yep.
So, we had a long discussion about it, and I told him, you know, like I said at the first meeting, that he's not doing anything wrong, I don't want him there, but he's not doing anything wrong.
Okay.
I'm having trouble signing this. See some of the bullet points, I don't completely agree with it, probably wouldn't have signed it, seeing some of the bullets.
So, you, you signed a blank piece of paper and didn't ask to read it again before she gave it to anybody? Okay, alright. But that, so... You answered my questions, um, I understand, okay. Let's unpack that further, which of the bullet points don't you like? You're here, so...
They're, they're mine ones, uh...
Okay.
Rose will bust a break over the changes since you've taken ownership. Runs his work out with neighbors in mind, I would agree with that.
You, you would not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, which one is that?
Runs his work here.
I think it's with a disregard.
Okay.
Just, uh, just an ambivalent something to have to make.
Okay. Well, is, is his ambivalence in that he's gotta run his business on his land? And he's gotta worry about making money more than making you guys happy? That's not necessarily against the rules.
We would, um, probably would have signed it if I had seen all of the bullets.
Okay, but it doesn't sound like she fully pulled the wool over your eyes either.
No, I'm not gonna say she fully pulled the wool over.
Okay.
I did not see that.
Okay, you gave her a little bit of creative license, you don't like the way that she used it. Alright. I got it, that's different. I got concerned there for a minute, I thought, I thought we were having a Judge Judy moment. The, the hard factual, so with respect to the hard factual statements, do you have any disagreement? You know, hard facts are, like, have, have you noticed a little bit of cleanup in the, in the noise levels and working hours and, and foul language?
I think that there's been probably a bit, but Marissa had...
Okay.
Marissa had the problem because she was close.
Okay.
I can see, but it's the light that he's talking about, it's in my office, I can see it every night, but I applaud a different way to take that light out.
Yeah. That, that light, that light went up with the Quonset hut?
No, it went up, uh, it went up after.
Went up after. Alright, so around the...
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know about that light. Uh, we'll get into that later.
Okay.
Um, but, alright, okay.
Started to come together, it gets off track, it's starting to come back together, please.
Chris Garcia, one-one, you know, different point. And, hold on, question one I have, so there are other buildings on the property that could be used for the same purpose that the Quonset hut is being used for?
Right.
Does that create an intensification to use?
There are other buildings on the site that could be used for what they're doing in the Quonset hut, but they're using those other buildings for other things, and those other buildings were there, they're not new. The argument that they made, which sort of makes sense to me, is they're not doing anything new inside the Quonset hut, they're doing stuff in the Quonset hut that they used to do outside. So, that's not necessarily an intensification that's more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Unless it is.
Right.
But we still haven't really heard what's going on with the Quonset hut, other than the light that is more detrimental. I'm not necessarily taking the position that there isn't anything, I just haven't heard it yet, and I don't live there. So, anyone else? Not that we're not gonna come back to people.
One-one, pretty much Stockbridge Road, well, since the Quonset hut came up around that time zone, it appears that most of the processing is now outback, you know, on the town, depending on whether what was in it or not, right? So, maybe things had moved back, if the Quonset hut wasn't there, maybe it would've...
So, we, we did talk a little bit about that at the last meeting, we had that contract with the town, that was definitely the most intense of the usage. We could go back and forth as to whether or not that intensification was an expansion of the use, the fact of the matter is, it's over. Um, it sounded like it probably was, and it probably shouldn't have been allowed, but it's over, you can't get, you know...
They're still bringing stuff from the White House.
Yeah, but the use that is going on back there now, I'm not so sure, and I haven't heard specifics that it's that different or that much more of an expansion of, or a intensification from what has happened back there over the years. I, I'm not telling, I'm, I'm sort of asking.
So I have a question on your point you just made about whether or not that was an intensification and admittedly being a less of a Quonset hut, but if that is to happen, you said, as you said, it's now common and over, but in future scenarios, if something like that happened, what actions is the abutter supposed to do outside of? Making a phone call, and then otherwise, by the time you get a front of board, it's over, or done, you respectfully say it's over, or done?
Bob, can you help me answer that question, which I'm happy to repeat? What, what method to protect themselves doesn't a abutter have if all of a sudden they see clear action at this site that is clearly to them an intensification?
You don't ask easy questions.
No, cause I, I try, I try to prep for these things and know the answers to the easy ones.
Depends, I suppose, on what activity they're witnessing. It possibly could fall into the realm of, um, police department, it could possibly fall into a zoning violation. We certainly do run across situations where a joint effort is made between both departments to rein in an activity that's otherwise not legal. The interesting thing here is, let's just use an example, somebody sets up, uh, one amounts to a kennel in a residential neighborhood, their dog's sitting for twenty dogs. That's a pretty easy kind of switch from basically nothing wrong happening to something that's pretty clearly wrong happening. This would be an intensification of an existing condition. Who's to judge what constitutes an intensification and what doesn't? And how do we judge it? And how do we observe it? Certainly, we would not ignore neighborhood complaints, we'd follow up, but there's no, like, immediate force that can be brought to bear to halt that situation the way you pull somebody over if they were speeding, for example.
If, if, I, that's as good of an answer as I could have imagined, I, it, it's hard. There, the, the use that is allowed here is amorphous enough, and there isn't a decibel level that's allowed and isn't, there isn't a nuisance to neighbors level that allowed is, and isn't, and it's not unreasonable, in my view, to say someone who's gonna operate in a yard of this... someone who's gonna operate in a yard of this nature on a property, there's gonna have days that the, it bothers the neighbors level is six out of ten, and there's gonna be days where the, it bothers its neighbors level is nine point nine out of ten. And where ten point one out of ten is, I don't know on a given day, what they're processing, that's gonna be hard to police. If they, you know, if he starts renting out things to ten different companies doing ten different things, or maybe two or three different companies doing two or three different things, maybe we got something to talk about. I, I don't know the answer, that is a, is a pretty big what-if game, and, and I certainly don't know enough about the business and how the business changes over time, and whether those are real changes or just the natural evolution of that business. It's, it's not an easy question to answer.
Yeah, could, could I- The reason I ask this is that that activity recently happened, right? So, like, you admitted, and we've all discussed, we've been there for a while, we've all discussed that exact activity happening, and that exact activity essentially going unchecked until we got here, and that point has been resolved by the patchway solving itself. So, it's just not so much, I guess, a what-if, as it is a reality, and any reality has a chance to become a reality again. And I guess, now, stop talking of this, is I guess our request is to get a burn with the arbor parties to extend to the extent of the property line is reasonable and possible.
Yeah.
Could, could I?
Yes.
I, I don't wanna interrupt, but, I, I do just wanna quickly say for the record, um, although I don't think it's particularly relevant, a mere intensification of the use is not a violation of the, uh, of the bylaw or of the statute. Uh, there are a lot of cases, and I read them all today, uh, where the business, uh, that's being operated in a non-conforming, uh, property has, has just gotten busier, expanded, doubled in size, you know, modernized with new equipment, that kinda stuff. And that, it has to go quite a ways before it's all of a sudden no longer a non-conforming use.
Needs to be an expansion that's essentially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, it, it has to be, under the statute, it has to be an expansion, uh, or a, or a construction of something new like this Quonset hut.
Yeah, that's-
And that's-
I think that's consistent with-
That was my point in saying that the business becomes successful and is busier more often, it's probably not gonna get you there. Yes, sir?
Mark Fenton, twenty-five present and out, by, with a full disclosure, a friend of, and, well, often visitor to one thirty-four stock.
That is abs- absolutely allowed.
Good.
They, they keep the beer cold?
Uh, that's right.
Good.
Um, the, and, and the former member of the planning board, so of interest to this, sir, Bob, and so on and that. Because these are the sort of complicated things that we all have to routinely deal with, right?
Yes.
And new, and, am I right in understanding, I just want a clarification, was before you, is it in fact a building permit for the expansion of Quonset hut, retroactively, right? If, if that's the actual permit?
Correct.
And am I right in, in understanding, or correcting, that one of the questions that you now are challenged with is, would we have given the permit had it been appropriately brought before us as an application before the structure was constructed? In other words, what should have happened is before the structure went up, the applicant comes in, applies for building permit, either gets it or it has to come before you because there's some concern about an intensification. The arborists are notified, you possibly have a hearing, and the relief that they might have requested would have happened through that normal process?
Yes, correct.
That having been obviated by the inappropriate action of the applicant, that is to say, building without a proper permit,
Mm-hmm.
that's agreed to, and nobody's contesting that, you now have the advantage of precedents, which is to say, you now know the kinds of questions you would have asked during the permit application. You would have said things like, now, is this going to entail an intensification use? Are you gonna bring more trucks onto the property, it's gonna be louder, dirtier? And the applicant ultimately would have said no, and then you would have been able to grant the permit accordingly and apply conditions as needed in that moment. She didn't have the opportunity to do that. What you do now have, though, is testimony that actually allows you to look back and see what the answers to those questions were.
Yes.
Are there gonna be more vehicles on the property?
Yes.
In fact, as happens.
Wait, uh, uh, you're making that, that, that was a, that was your position. That was the first one.
Testimony that I have heard, 'cause I've been listening and all the readings, and so, my understanding of the testimony from, and I'm gonna admit, you're getting my vibes, right? I told you my-
Sure, sure.
You got it.
Yup.
I'm not, I mean, forthright with regard to that. However, it is very clear that the two closest arborers-
Yes.
-have given the testimony that suggests it did in fact complementarily an intensification of the activity that is in fact increasingly detrimental to the arborage.
That, that, which was- Go ahead, your interpretation of the testimony absolutely-
Precisely, I'm just offering that-
Yup, please, please continue.
And my, my only conclusion would be, it empowers this board to either not grant the permit at all, require removal of the structure, I think it's very clear on the list before the board, not you, but you guys know that, I'm reminding everybody in attendance. And two, at least apply conditions with, without necessarily concern as to whether inconvenience the applicant. That is to say, a burn that has to be placed on his property entirely might be a reasonable amelioration or remediation now that you do have the testimony of those nearest arborers suggesting that that might be a worthy solution. Given that, I'm not, my understanding, again, my listening to testimony, anybody who was saying, take the structure down, nobody was actually going that far, which by the way, could be a plausible request since they say it was built without a permit, right? It's conceivable they could, could ask that. That's not without hearing, I think I've heard the arborist said, create a burn, reduce the, the negative impacts. They are testifying-
Sure.
-words that were substantial, uh, and do so on your own property. It, it, is-
That's, that's a-
Is that a fair summation, or am I way out of bounds on that?
You are not way out of bounds on that, in my opinion, that is a fair summation. You drew some conclusions-
Correct, admitted.
On testimony-
I'm with you.
That are, we discussed, the other side of those conclusions is that the extra truck activity was not because of the Quonset hut, it was because of a very significant construction project that happens to coincide in timing, that is not part of Mr. Spass's business really at all, and because of the very high period of use due to the lighthouse work that was taking place on his site.
And that, in fact, there are a number of people that have signed this petition-
Saying exactly that.
That, that are even closer. Um, right? So, the parks?
Closer, but not more impacted because of the way the property is laid out, is what I think you would say?
That, that would be-
And for a tenant.
Well, and-
Yeah, further away, the parks and, what is Sean's name? One of the yellow ones?
Uh, I'm not su- I, I've only met-
Right on his driveway, with his barn right up against him, I mean, if anybody did that, it's him, I don't think he's up at home, but that's a different story.
And he signed this? I don't know either.
What's he at?
We didn't list the names, but that's okay. But, a very fair summation of the facts. You drew some conclusions which are not totally off-base at all.
Okay, and I get a point, my, my concluding point, and I'm-
Absolutely, please.
Is, had this happened previous, that is, had the applicant brought the, the application appropriately-
Yeah.
-before construction, the discussion about where the burn would occur would have been, would have been no doubt that an expectation would have been that it be built a fence or a burn on his own property, on the applicant's property.
Yeah, so that's a summation of what we've already said tonight.
That's a really important point, though.
Um-
Recognize, had it all happened pre-construction, nobody would have been suggesting that a burn or a fence could have been built anywhere other than on the applicant's property.
Pre-post, isn't gonna make a difference.
That's it, that's the point.
What is making a difference, what we started to get to right there, is that we do have a burn, it's less of a burn than you want, and I totally understand why it's less of a burn than you want. I understand why they don't want to achieve the burn you want. But, I think that the burn that they are open to does arguably mitigate the presence of the hut light aside. Now, you asked some more specific questions about, okay, I see the burn, it's not insignificant, but we were talking about arbor parties on the top of it, it makes it prettier, it makes the burn more substantial, very valid question. Ma'am.
Julie Mallon, thirty-two stock, through the road. Okay, the contender just read a statement, but this has gone way beyond-
Okay.
That. First and foremost, as Mr. Pasha alluded to when he was speaking, back in twenty, um, twenty sixteen, I started writing letters to the town, every, every office here. And there was a meeting concerning this property. At that time, I started to realize that there was dumping going on on the property that was then Marissa Baldur and my co-owned property. In addition, just as an aside, I just want you to know, I have the master deed in all here, and I want, have an eye on attorney, so I have someone that will be addressing this.
Sure.
I just wanted you to realize-
No, thank you, it's good to, it's good to know.
I'm not expecting us to decide something.
Good, that, but that's good to know.
My objection with the idea of the burn that he's in, he's talking about, and adding the, um, the phrase adverse possession, which I also had, had a couple of meetings with Mr. Vogel and Little Duncan, who assured me that some adverse possession is such a good question.
So, that, so, hang on, to the extent they said that, or to the extent they led you to understand that, that is incorrect. I'm not saying that these gentlemen have achieved adverse possession on your land, but Situate is in no way immune to adverse possession.
But it's, it is no different than the rest of the state of Massachusetts.
Alright, so they're, they're proposing the burn-
Yes.
-to go snaking into the property.
So, I'm sorry, I wanna hear what you think about that and the other burn, just to clarify for one second, ma'am, they are not proposing the burn snaking into the property. They are not, I know you saw a plan with that burn on there, I know that they proposed that to you at one time. They are not proposing that burn any longer. They are not proposing it to us, they are proposing a burn that goes along seventy-five percent up your property line, starting at the back of the Parks property line. And we have a plan here that shows that, but please continue, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Because of some of the other language used here tonight, adverse possession being private.
Yup.
Because initially, the property has, by improvement, through having the land survey, has been encroached on-
Yes.
That I think is factual.
Okay.
So, my objection to not putting a firm burn on the whole entire boundary is because I don't know that I can trust in what else can happen, now that Mr. Spass is fifty percent owner of the common area. He is not trustee of the entire property as he has-
I understand.
-said because the master deed policy clearly states, you're only trustee of your individual units, and the rest is owned fifty-fifty.
We, we don't, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get into that? I understand what you're saying, I, I, we're just, I, I totally understand your point.
I am up against something way beyond what I want this house to do.
I, that's fair, I understand that too, ma'am.
And I have nowhere to go with this, and now I have to pay for attorneys. I am a employee of Situate, I don't have the money to do these things, and I started out hoping that people would address this early enough on, that this would not be an issue. And now, it's the biggest issue in my life.
Ma'am, I, I understand that and appreciate that, and everything you said just sounds valid to me. I'm glad that you've hired an attorney. I think unfortunately, that's the avenue that you have to go, because this, the most important part to you from the plans that I'm seeing are a private property line dispute and a dispute amongst condo owners. Those are very real, they can become very personal, I've seen them in other avenues, I, I, my sympathy for the feelings that you have, that I would have if I was in your situation, I know don't do you any good. I'm glad you've hired counsel, and I hope this gets sorted out. Unfortunately, the Quon- if the Quonset hut was over the property line, this would be done. You would be right, they would be wrong, and they'd have to rip it out. Unfortunately, it's not. The issue that you're having with the property line and the activity, arguably, they're saying, on your property, we don't have the power to stop it. You, you've gone the right route. You're, you're going, I'm confident that you're going to get some help and some resolution to that issue, and I very much hope you do. Unfortunately, this isn't that. I, part of me wishes it was. So, I apologize for that, and I understand the confusion as to maybe this should be that. Unfortunately, it's not. Do you, before I go to someone else, and we could certainly come back to you, if you have a comment about the facts or circumstances surrounding the construction of the hut, I do wanna hear it. You are a close arbor to that, and it certainly affects you to some degree. And we can, if you, please raise your hand if you wanna speak about the hut further, we'll come back to you. Would anyone else like to submit a comment? Okay. We've had one question posed to us, arbor parties on the burn. What do we talk, what's, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm open to that.
You're open to that? Let's, do you have any more elaborate thoughts on that? Will you put arbor parties on the top of it?
Uh, I, yes.
Okay, they're not free, I, I know that, and they die. And then you have to put new ones.
And then they look checkered, you got the brown one and the green one, it's brutal.
Some, some sort of green, um, the, there are trees that do a little bit better in that situation.
Yeah.
That I prefer.
Um, and is there any opportunity to extend this burn further along any property line?
Uh, not currently.
Okay. That light, it's on a very significant pole to me, but my standards for the significance of poles are admittedly low. Can it be placed at the peak of the Quonset hut, pointed down?
Um, not, you, unfortunately, no.
Why not? And I'm not disagreeing, I honestly don't know, I just don't understand why not.
There isn't really a peak at the Quonset hut, it's kind of a dome, I don't know how you'd fix it to a dome.
The apex, I'm sorry.
I mean, I don't know how you would have fixed it to that, short of drilling holes in the top of it.
Okay.
That would, would not-
Present other problems, sure.
That would be another new set of problems. Um, I think we talked last time about the light regulations, is you, your light can't spill past the property line? Is that-
Yeah.
That would generally be a condition the planning board would set on something they had jurisdiction over.
Yeah, so I, I would, I, I certainly feel that at this particular time, that, that light doesn't do that, and by the construction and addition of these arbor parties, it certainly won't do that. Now, I will add to that, that, um, Mr. Dillon's house is downgrade from that.
Sure.
So, now we're talking about an elevation difference, a light, burn, and the-
No.
We're, we're gonna mitigate that significantly. There is, is that one light in the back to, to protect what's back there?
Um, so, I, I understand everything you're saying. I also think that's a real tall light that went up at the same time as the Quonset hut, and illuminates the whole yard, and I understand your points and your, and your neighbors' letters, points that the light is for safety and it's, it's keeping my kids in a few years from drinking and all the space out on your- space out on your yard, but, um, hopefully a few years, um, but that's a pretty big light, and I don't follow why it can't be no taller than the Quonset hut, and if not a fixed right to it, up against it, or more of part of it.
Um, I, I could put it at the height of the Quonset hut.
Right, why isn't it?
Isn't that what you just said?
Why isn't it attached to it?
It's a, it's a Quonset hut, it's a pole.
Why isn't the pole right up against it?
Well, because of the layout of how the, the things are, there's a pole that's on, that's set off, so you can see it, and, um, I can set it at the same height as the Quonset hut.
Yeah, I, all right.
I think, I think his point is, he's trying to illuminate an area.
The whole area.
Right, which includes a portion of the Quonset hut, includes a portion of the yard.
Prior to the creation of the Quonset hut, was, was security and trespassing in, in issue?
Yes.
All right. Um, all right, so we got the Quonset hut, we got a, a, a berm that was, I thought the diagram of the berm was pretty good, we're gonna talk about moving the berm entirely onto your property unless you don't, um, or unless you get permission to, and we're gonna figure out how to word that. Back to our abutters. They're gonna make the argument that if they, they put up the ten-foot berm on their property, and they put greenery on top of it at a height of another, that is likely to grow as soon as it grows to a height of another six to eight feet. And if he lowers the light to no taller than the Quonset hut, that no one has made a clear argument that the Quonset hut is even an intensification of this use, let alone an intensification that's more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. First question is, do you disagree? And if second, how? Cause I'm having a hard time disagreeing with those condensed conditions and those answers. Yes?
I have one question.
Please.
If this Quonset hut is not an intensification, why does the northwest corner of the condominium property have to be used by part of this parking lot and the lot?
Are you, are you saying that the corner of your property was never used by this yard until the Quonset hut went up?
It was not by Nielsen, it was not.
So that wasn't really an answer to my question?
Well, in other words, that's why back in twenty sixteen, I started asking someone to come out and identify it and, and look at it, and I had, I also had.
I gotcha.
The property survey a few years back, and the stake disappeared.
You're saying that the corner of your property was never used by the yard until he became the owner of the other unit?
That's right, and there are Google photos of the time.
I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, and it's not important how plausible that sounds to me, that is an important issue for your counsel and in your property line dispute. Um, back to my question, which, which I think is the, is the meat and potatoes of what we're doing here. I'm not saying there isn't a counter to the argument that I know they're gonna make, I just don't see it yet, and, and I think I'm not the only one on the board that doesn't see it yet, and please, please chime in if you have a different way to put it, but what are we missing if we're missing something?
What I would say about Bob is, there's nothing, I would agree with you from the perspective, there's nothing I'm gonna be able to tell you that's not anecdotal, because we weren't actively tracking activity under the point, and so everything I've expressed today in meetings is all anecdotal, because obviously you never expect to track something to prove an identification, because that, I can't dispute.
I have another question for you, and this is just a question, I don't know that it comes into reality, would you rather the Quonset hut come down and you not get the berm?
No.
Okay, now, what I did with that question is if we denied the appeal, I, I gave them a pretty good argument, if we denied their request, you could bet that they're gonna find that one in the minutes and use that as evidence as to why we should grant this. But, you understand what I'm getting at, I, I wanna, I want you guys to win, even if it's a little bit of a win tonight.
No, I mean, it's work like, um, Mr. Spencer mentioned, like, we've not disputed him tearing down the Quonset hut, I don't think we ever expressed that, always express a desire for berm and arborvitae.
But I, I think his point is, that to a certain extent, that's the only thing that we can force him to do tonight. Or we could say, if you want to keep it, we need, now that, there's a straw that breaks that camel's back, too. And so, I, yes.
What a clarification, so you're suggesting you can, you could not have put a condition, were you granting the permit, for example, back before the thing had been built, you might have put conditions on that.
Which we're, which we're considering doing tonight.
Correct, that, that could include a fence or a berm, though, those are not unreasonable, there are often conditions considered in a, in a situation like this.
It's a, they're conditions we are currently considering, absolutely.
I wanted to make sure that, that's where that's, you were thinking of this as a condition of the permit, so it would be.
Right, it would only be a condition.
Absolutely, but, but if, if we deny the permit.
Correct, you don't have the, I am.
It is extremely difficult for us to deny the permit and get you your berm.
Right.
Arguably impossible.
Possibly.
Um, that's where we're at, I personally, and this, we typically show our cards, and I certainly do on this board, I'm, and I always come to two conclusions, there's what I think, and then there's what I think will stand up to an appeal by a party I think is going to appeal, and I'm not even sure that this Quonset hut, other than the light and the fact that you can see it, and that means you can see more of a non-conforming use from your house, is an intensification at all, let alone an intensification that's more detrimental to you or the surrounding neighborhood as a whole? And so, to the extent it is, I feel like a good berm and that light, however it works, takes care of it, and even if I didn't, I'm concerned that they could get a court to agree with them and not me. And if we shut it down, I don't think we get any berm. They might still put it up, but, but we can't tell them they have to. To a certain extent, to his point, they're even more inclined to build the berm because it, it's, it's a pain in the rear to take this building down, even if they don't think they want it anymore. What else?
Maintenance of the berm?
That's, sounds like a good point.
Yep.
Especially with, like, some greenery on it, right, to your point about the, about dying.
So, let's go, we're, we're sort of.
I was just gonna clarify, the berm is on the property.
Well, that, that would be one of the conditions, yes.
That's the one condition, I, I mean, I'm looking at.
The where of the berm.
Property lines where I see a berm not on, on someone else's property.
Berm, where, how?
These are the property lines that we have, whether it's disputed or not, we don't even have a record of that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where, how, maintenance. I have a question, if this berm is ten feet tall, and after a season, we've got five, six feet of greenery on top of it, is the light as it presently exists still gonna be an issue? How far? Might, might it not be? Okay, I know, I, I, that's, that's a valid answer, that's a valid answer, totally, I understand.
If you chuck the light and just turn the light the other way, it would be on the side of the property.
Totally.
It's an LED light, it's a big light.
Yep.
You know, and the, I've got cataracts here and stuff like that, I can actually sit there and look.
I understand, yeah, I follow you.
Gotcha.
All right, so we got the, the where of the berm, the how are you gonna build it, how are you gonna maintain it?
Yeah.
And we got the light. All right.
How wide does this berm have to be if it's ten foot tall?
Looks like twenty feet. If the, if the picture is correct, it's twenty.
I'm pretty detailed in.
Is that, that's, yeah.
That's, it's not the first time you've built the berm, right?
Right.
I know.
Yeah, so, you're who we should be asking, I like it. Um, but I do.
Looks like it's twenty feet by ten feet, and then you've got five feet at the top for your vegetation.
Talk to us about.
If I'm looking at this correct.
What is it, what does it take to, when you, when you put in the berm, it's gonna look its best that day, right? The greenery's probably not gonna look its best that day, because it's gotta take, what does it take to maintain?
Uh, depends on what it's constructed over with the, that's why I, I put screen a little more mulched.
Yeah.
Could be either, could be like a natural, a wild grass, or it could just be mulched.
Yeah.
Either, either one.
But do you achieve similar heights just with trees?
There, well, you're talking.
Very expensive trees are a long period of time.
Very, very expensive trees that could die, and the maintenance becomes more complicated.
And it takes a while for them to get to the appropriate height, right, so.
Given them a jump start.
And then they, they're more likely to blow down, they're more likely to blow down under their property, it's, yeah.
Is, is Concom, do they have something to say about how berm is done?
So, that's, yes.
That's a good question.
Bob?
Yeah, I think that's a very interesting question Chris brings up. The construction of the berm is gonna be important, the maintenance and the, the design, all, all really important aspects that you can't leave too loose, um, for obvious reasons.
Do we know that Concom's going to want to talk about this, if it's outside the buffer?
Just think about this, you're in a water resource protection district.
Is the berm, though?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, it's not in Con, this is a different district, which is the, uh, beyond Concom's offset lines from wetlands, that's, that's what you're seeing on the, on the plan.
Oh, right, it's not, it's not in the wetlands.
It's not necessarily.
Oh, but it's in water resource, water resource. This is the extension of water resource going that way.
Correct.
I, so, okay, so we've answered that question, good.
There's some control over that. During the building, it's gotta be carefully monitored, so there's no erosion, for example, so that might be jute netting on the side slopes and silsack at the toe of those slopes while it's being built.
You wanna see the map?
No, I, I, I was, I was missing the, the line here on the plan, because it was so far away from the area we were talking about, meaning that this, the area of the berm was so far inside of the zone, and I didn't realize, I was misreading this plan, so, it's very clear now.
Can, could I just make a quick point about the berm?
Yeah.
I look at both sides of it, it's in my best interest to construct it properly, I'm not gonna degrade the value of either one of the properties that I own.
And also, and also, this is sort of what you do.
This is.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
This is kinda what we do.
That's very valid, I understand.
It needs to be in writing, I'm not saying you wouldn't.
Right.
Do it correctly.
Um, yes, sir.
Mark 25 Crescent, uh, would you normally put a condition, or maybe they already exist, on time of day that vehicles can be entering, and you know, when the, when the structure was being built, you might say, okay, trucks are gonna be going in and out of this, shouldn't be doing so before X and after X, do those conditions form when you put on a, a building like this?
On the construction of a berm like this?
No, building, your building, because it's a building berm, so you're.
Oh, he means on the Quonset hut.
You're saying, we don't expect to see trucks going in and out of it before, six, seven, I don't know, but.
Thought it already had that.
But would it be not uncommon to do?
Yeah.
The property has.
Conditions like that on the property.
Right, not, not on the building.
Permits for a building that's already built, so there's no truck traffic associated.
Yeah.
No, no, he was saying for the operation of the business.
He means as a condition on the property, it's already.
Operation of the building, you're granting a building permit.
Yes, we, we, we got you, already in place.
Usually say.
Yeah, already in place.
Yeah, but that, that's on the property.
All right.
All right.
So, so, I mean, do we, do we make it all subject to Concom review, with the conditions that they're gonna put on it, or are we gonna? The approval of their berm, uh, uh, first, let's, let's, let's do this in order, where? The condition I propose, and let's hit these each individually and, and talk about if we agree on them or not, the condition I propose on the where of the berm is, it's gotta be entirely on your property, the, the Spath Engineering property, and tell me if you're unclear on what I mean there, it can go, in my opinion, onto the abutters property in any way, the property of the condominium, if both condominium owners consent to it.
I, I would suggest that, um, that instead of requiring the consent of both condominium owners.
Yes.
Um, that, uh, I mean, you would say, unless it's, you know, they, if Stockbridge Properties lawfully can put it, uh, straddling the line, they're allowed to do it, but you prescribing.
How are they going to achieve that lawfully putting?
But you, you prescribing the method by which that might be achieved or not.
What's another method?
I don't really wanna talk about that.
Okay.
But there are other legal methods in, with respect to the condominium and the trust and that kind of thing, I, I, I mean, like I said before.
So here, I, I follow you, here's what, here's the condition I'm going to propose, the where is on your property? Or straddling the line, if you have a court order?
Or consent.
That it can be done, straddling the line. Not do and then prove, prove and then do. That's what's gonna work for me. Put, put yourself in my shoes.
Yes.
I'm already granting a permit for a non-conforming use that has even arguably expanded into a private residential lot, and maintained that private residential lot, because the owner of that use acquired one of the units. You think you can win that case, I think you don't know if you can win that case, and I don't know if you could win that case, and I've been involved in cases like that before. I'm not going to grant a permit that even suggests in the slightest that this commercial use that is existing due to its pre-existing non-conforming nature should even think about building mitigation structures on that private land until a court says that they can without the other unit owner's consent.
Again, I don't.
I understand.
You need to do.
What I need to do.
If you feel is appropriate to do, I don't, I would suggest that it's not appropriate to, to, to do those issues.
I understand, that's.
Essentially what you're saying, what you're saying.
Yeah, that's gonna be my condition on the where, and honestly, unless one of you wants to convince me otherwise, do you think I should consider otherwise, or you guys are aware of that?
No, I think, I think the answer is either consent of both owners.
Yep.
Or a court order that says you can build it straddling, otherwise it's completely on the existing, you know.
And just for the procedure for us, the way that this works and the way that we're able to go through it like that is, if one of us says no, this doesn't happen. Would you agree with that procedurally? This isn't a finding, this is a special permit where three member board, all three of us has to say yes, you would, you would agree? You disagree how?
You, you, you mean the, the finding?
Overall, the special permit that you need to maintain this Quonset hut.
Yes.
Requires a unanimous vote of the three voting members of the board.
Oh, I don't, I, I, I don't think so, but I, I.
Okay.
Would be happy to list, I'd. Be happy to listen, I mean, I don't know.
I think we think so. I wish that Jeff Delison was here. Um, Bob, Bob, do you do you agree?
Yes, that's the typical, um, way that you grant special permits.
While we're talking about that, I'll look at the code, make sure I'm not wrong, I could be. Um, but the way, the reason we're talking like that, just procedurally, we want everyone to understand what we're talking about, is so if we all have to agree that we should do it, if we're gonna put conditions on whichever of us thinks the con the condition should be the most restrictive is what we should go with.
Right.
Because if I wanna put a restriction on, she wants it to be more restrictive, otherwise she's not gonna vote yes, then we should probably just adopt her restriction. Um, he's looking, so I don't have to. That's where I think we're leaning with the where. It's gotta be on the subject property and not extending onto the condominium property unless you achieve consent of the other condominium owner or a court says that you don't need consent of the condominium owner. If the berm goes up, it's on that property and you didn't get that consent or a court to say that you don't need it, you violated your special permit. The what of the berm? I think we should keep that rather simple because landscaping is complicated. What's a reasonable amount of height on the top of the berm that we expect you, that we can expect you to build a relatively dense arborvitae's like landscaping planting?
Are you asking?
How tall do you think it should have to be?
The arborvitae or the berm?
The arborvitae, the berm you've given us a very good diagram on, sorry.
Um, probably for that number, I'd wanna start with four footers because it'd be quite few that'll have to go in there.
So four footers and that they will grow.
They grow, it won't be arborvitae, it'll probably be a, um.
Arborvitae-like, that's the only term I know.
Yeah, arborvitae-like, they're.
Green tree-ish bushes.
What you can expect for growth.
That will be maintained of a height of between four and four or more feet. I don't think we care if they get super tall, if they're arborvitae's, right? Or arborvitae's like, yes.
Evergreen, you meant evergreen rather than green?
Yes, I think arborvitae's like implies that, um, but evergreen is a better homogeneous planting term, not my forte. Evergreen of four foot at planting stage to be maintained in a relatively healthy manner, which is not to say you can't let them go brown for a period, this is situat. We get too much rain and not enough rain and never in between. Um, maintenance of the berm, I I don't wanna make this an educational exercise in maintenance of berms, and I don't want Bob's office to have to interpret that. The berms, the dimensions are on the plan that we have, that we're gonna incorporate by reference into our decision. And that has to be maintained in a as, or as in a like new condition. And if annual maintenance of that is required, annual maintenance of that is required to be covered in a grass-like substance or mulch. Maintained. Grass or mulch. Yes? Great. Hi. I don't know what to do with the light. A who?
My name.
On the light?
Well, you have to install a berm.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we're gonna get that.
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't know what to do about the light, you guys got any ideas?
Aye.
Do we need to do anything about the light?
I don't know, I hope the berm solves.
How high is the light right now?
22ish.
22?
20.
Yeah.
The Kwanzaa hut's 19?
Yeah.
So we thought to say lower it to the height of the Kwanzaa hut at one point. I don't know if that will.
I don't know if four feet's gonna make it, I mean.
I don't know either, it's hard to say, plus the berm would theoretically be.
What do you think we should do about the light?
15 feet.
Even if you just turn it, just, it's like I I I know what you're thinking, picking, but you ask a lot, but you went to a.
You know what?
It was just to turn the light. So if you could.
If we leave the light on the pole that you have it, can you angle it a little bit better, better so it pollers them a little bit less?
Three or four degrees.
Light to be further angled away from a butter homes. Not even property. Just homes. Okay.
Is the light where it's at, because you had existing power there versus facing on the property line, more towards your own property, but was conveniently placed because you had existing power there?
Yeah, we had, I had.
There was no consideration made, right? I mean, if it was on the property line facing inward instead of in the center facing outward, wouldn't that alleviate some of these?
Oh.
Turn?
Yeah, the power was there, it's allowed to have a light, I did. We got, we got the where of the berm, we got the the what of the berm, the what of the landscaping. We got the maintenance to be maintained in a like, in maintained in the condition that it's put in at. Um, repaired regularly, it's not like that's necessarily a crazy undertaking for you, you have the equipment, you have the experience, it's not like you have to hire someone. Um, the light, an effort's gonna be made by the applicant to further angle the light that exists now away from the abutters homes. How long do you need to build the berm?
Well, it sounds like I've gotta get a number of approvals from conservation before I can begin the construction. I don't know how long that's gonna take. I mean, the actual physical construction, how long it will take?
Yeah.
Um, probably a week or so.
Con Con meets at least once a month, right?
It may not be something that's gotta go before the full commission, it might be something the.
Even if it did.
The agent can deal with, you know.
Even if it did, 60 days to get in front of ConCom, is that reasonable? I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I just don't know. So, and then a and then a 10 days, even two weeks. It's September, October, November, the berm to be completed by December 15th. Uh, let's be honest, right? If the berm's not done by December 15th, we still want them to build the berm, right? Just, please build the berm, you're agreeing to build the berm, like, come on, like, I'm I'm not, I'm not that worried about the when, you understand? The the berm. If they get on our docket and show us that you stopped pursuing the berm, I'm gonna vote that we should pull the permit.
Yeah.
Right? If they say it's been seven weeks and it's not built, and you're like, ConCom won't answer our calls, I'm not, I'm not gonna pull, I'm not gonna pull the permit.
You're right, okay.
You know, diligent pursuit.
Yeah, you're going to actively pursue the construction of the berm. Actively pursue. Subject to those conditions, which are obviously going to be drafted in a slightly more professional manner. I would make a motion that the board, anyone stop me if we're not ready for this?
Do we have the length?
Of the berm?
It's gonna be per the plan, right?
Can we just, can we reference this?
Yeah, does that have a, does that have a?
Oh, this doesn't have the length, oh, it doesn't have the length.
No, that's the property line measurement?
No, it has 120 foot long.
It does, for a over 160 feet of property line.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, it references.
You're misreading that, that's the property line length, that's not the length of the berm.
No, 160's a property line length.
160?
Right?
Yeah.
Right.
And a berm's 120 feet long.
120's on that piece of paper, right?
Yeah, I think I think that's right, so. So.
That's consistent.
Yeah, so the I would make a motion to grant a building permit to maintain the existing Kwanzaa hut. Subject to inspection of the hut and Bob's office confirming that it was built in accordance with the building code had we given the building permit, we're not blessing the constitution of the Kwanzaa hut. Finding that to the extent the existence of that Kwanzaa hut creates an intensification or expansion of this nonconforming use, such expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, provided the following conditions are met. The applicant further angles the existing light that was constructed with the hut downwards and away from a butter's homes. And the applicant constructs a berm in accordance with the berm, the site pro berm diagram submitted with the application to a height of 10 feet. And with evergreen plantings of a height of approximately four feet at the time of planting. Both the berm and the plantings to be maintained reasonably to continue the appearance of both in a manner not significantly less than the quality and structure that they were upon installation. Said berm is to be located along the property line shown on the most recent plan submitted with the application by SPATH Engineering dated last revised June 7th of 2021. However.
Oh, June, June 22nd.
Excuse me, June 22nd, 2021. However, said berm is to be located entirely on parcel 54 to 25 and 26, that side of the property line, unless and until the applicant obtains the consent of both condominium owners for the abutting land or a court order stating that they don't need the consent of both condominium owners. The surface of the berm is to be maintained with a mulch covering or a grass-like covering. The berm, the construction of the berm is to be actively pursued through any necessary town permitting and board approval profit processes and then to be constructed. If the applicant abandons the construction of the berm, abandons pursuing the construction of the berm, this board reserves the right to pull the permit. If the applicant violates any of these conditions, the board reserves the right to pull the permit. What did we miss?
I think we got everything except, didn't we say December 15th and actively?
You said actively pursuing.
Yes.
But then when we were discussing, we had said.
The question is.
December 15th and actively pursuing.
As an additional condition, if at any time the applicant determines that the berm's not gonna be done by December 15th, you're probably not gonna plant things if you don't get it done by I don't know when, but you're not gonna plant these things on December 15th, probably. If you find that the berm won't be done by December 15th, we request a letter be submitted to the board. You don't have to come before us, a letter be submitted to the board saying why and what the plan is.
And that letter, and a copy of that letter to go to the abutters. From you.
Yes, please.
Um, are we sure that the site pro is part of the application? Is is that now officially part of the application, the site pro diagram?
I think this was in the packet that she gave us.
Sorry, so I'm just confirming to make sure because we referenced it that way.
Yeah, it was part of what was sitting here.
Okay.
Um.
That's it.
I agree. Do you need a second?
I think I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Here we go. Thank you all very much.
Let let me just say, thank, thank you very much, I I know this took a lot of time and.
Absolutely.
And it's very much appreciated.
And thank you for the participation, we stayed productive, this is good. You, hopefully you recognize we respect your right to run this business and we want you to keep running it. And you're not running it as poorly as a sit situat residence as some people made it sound some of the time. Um, I didn't even say that right, you're not running it poorly as a situat resident. You built the Kwanzaa hut without a building permit, whatever, now you you probably got your building permit. But, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you be able to take a stab at the meat of that and of that decision? With, you should know that we are not gonna hold it against you if you miss one or all of the conditions.
Okay.
If you even want to, if you're not comfortable trying to take a stab at the conditions, give us your draft of the decision that says that we grant it subject to these conditions and then I'll fill it in.
We'll plug them.
That sounds good?
It is recorded though, so if you didn't take notes, you can watch.
You can always stream it.
But but I took notes on the conditions and then we'll obviously all talk to make sure we got them.
Yeah, this one we're gonna make sure it's fine.
Send it to Janine and I, if you have my email address, otherwise she can loop us in together. What what I'll do is I'll round out those conditions, I'll check with these folks. And then we'll bounce it back off you if you think we missed anything or went different on anything.
Great, that sounds great.
And and the faster you get it to us.
The faster we'll get it to you.
The more you build it out, we'll get it back to you even quicker.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You probably will need it for ComCom, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Yes, so to answer your question, uh, we're technically a three-member board, so it has to be unanimous.
Yeah.
If we were a four-member board, it's three out of four.
That's right, and that's for a special permit or a variance and not for a finding, correct?
That is my understanding, I have to go to 48 for it, it's not in here.
Yeah.
Right, which makes sense, right? Because it's it's administrative procedure.
And I didn't mean to suggest that I wish Jeff was here, and he's not, that's not, that came out wrong. Jeff always reminds us of how many votes we need during.
Right.
During his individual applications.
Right.
And it's because he checked his facts first.
That's right.
Um, we have some minutes.
Yeah, July and August.
I I can't vote on the August because I wasn't here.
These folks can.
Ju- June and July were good.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm good on August.
I'm good.
As well.
You're good on August, you're good on August. June and July is the three of us, I would make a motion for the board as a group and no one objects to the acceptance of the June, July and August meetings as we were respectively there that Janine has circulated.
I second.
I can second because I was at all of them, right?
Love it.
Oh, that's right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there we go, the minutes are approved. And motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are we off? Alright.
We didn't come back on that one.
For three, it took us till 9:30 for three applica, I know, it's the last one.
The time.
This might be a record, three.